Especially for some of our. So through statute, there exists a state library trust. It is a trust that's held at the Board of Investments and it allows us to collect donations largely from our patrons. By far, the majority of these donations come from our Talking Book Library patrons and other state library supporters in the form of small annual donations as well as in the form of bequests from various estates. Per our commission policy, donated funds are used to provide enhancements to library services over and above normal operating services. We don't use these monies to provide any of our ongoing operational support. And whenever we have a need to use these funds, we will come to the State Library Commission with information and a proposal for how we wish to use those funds and to seek support from the commission for that use. In your quarterly financial reports, we share with you information about the balance that's in the trust as well as ongoing projects that have funds appropriated from the trust. So right now, we have a balance of about $1.6 million in the trust. And we have two ongoing projects that have been approved for expenditures from the trust. One of which is this rebranding project. We've spent approximately $146,000. Some of that is in accruals and some of that is in cash. And then in April, the commission approved using some of those funds to create a sensory trail project in the landscaping of the new Heritage Center as a way to make sure that that opportunity is available to all patrons of the historical society who have different kinds of either sensory or accessibility needs. So those are the two projects for which the commission have approved expenditures out of the trust. With the approval from the State Library Commission in December of 2020, in early 2021, we worked with the State Procurement Bureau to administer a request for proposal to identify a contractor to carry forward the intent of the commission to do the rebranding and then to move forward with the awareness campaign. That RFP was led by the Department of Administration's State Procurement Bureau. And also because of the size of the requisition, the state library received authorization from the Governor's Budget Office. Whenever agencies expend more than, I believe it's $250,000 on a contract, they require Budget Office approval. So we did receive that approval. Through the RFP, we had eight firms respond. And Hoffman York scored the highest of the applicants based on their relevant experience. And also, they were the only applicant that had a physical office in Montana as well as a connection to Montana State Government through some of the work that they've done on contract with the state. The State Procurement Office then helped us to negotiate the contract that you have a copy of, which was approved by Department of Administration and their legal counsel, Mike Mannion. That contract was signed in mid-August of 2021. And you have both the contract as well as the deliverables in this information. At this point in time, we've gotten through the brand development phase of the contracts. And we're talking about launching the campaign to reach our key stakeholders through an educational campaign. You can see also that the total contract deliverables total about $210,000 of the $292,000 approved by the commission. And then the contract allows for us to pay travel and other incidentals. So Hoffman York began the process of the campaign by interviewing a wide variety of stakeholders, including commissioners, staff, legislators, officials from the Governor's Office, and other users of our services. And through their research, they revealed a significant problem. I wouldn't say we were surprised by the problem because it's something that we have been concerned about. But through their research, they were very clearly able to articulate that Montanans are using the state library services without realizing it. Or that Montanans are simply not aware of the services of the state library. So the goal of the rebrand and the educational campaign is to resolve that problem, to grow the awareness of the state library's mission and programs, to increase the value returned to the state's and its residents. And this information was shared with the commission at your February 2022 meeting. So Hoffman York proposed a solution, beginning with brand development, as I said, as the basis for then launching an awareness campaign. We have gone through now and completed the logo that serves as the basis of that rebrand, that is that unifying brand for the state library. Commissioners who've seen presentations from Hoffman York will know the references to Logo and Gogo and the fact that we had sort of a universe of logos that didn't succinctly identify the state library as the unifying agency that provides a wide variety of services. So with that new brand in place, we are at the point in time through which we intend to do a planning and launch of an educational campaign to raise awareness of the services of the state library. That planning needs to commence. And some of the information that we'll share with you is information from other similar kinds of campaigns. Because at the point in time we are in the contract, Hoffman York has not been in a position to do the kinds of detailed planning and creative design necessary for us to successfully launch that educational campaign. I do want to make it very clear that the logo is just a logo. It is just a brand. We can put it on our website. We can put it on our meeting materials. But it alone cannot solve the problem. And with the creation of a brand, the project itself is only half complete. That's why this educational campaign component of the project is essential for us to meet the intent and meet our goals of raising awareness and returning that investment back to the citizens of Montana. We've identified a number of audiences who we believe will benefit from more awareness about the state library services, including local libraries and their administrations, users and potential users of our Talking Book Services, state agencies, local governments, outdoor recreationalists, real estate professionals, reporters, emergency services, the legislature, and so on. We need the opportunity to develop targeted campaigns to identify and understand and engage with each of these audiences in ways that will demonstrate how important the information and services we provide can be for their own informational needs. So what does the rollout process itself look like? It's translating the brand into meaningful messages that's targeted to each of those specific audiences to raise awareness of our services. I don't want to go into a lot of detail here. Addie's available to provide more information. We've also provided information in your meeting packet about different kinds of campaigns that they have facilitated for the state of Montana as well as for contractors with other state agencies in other states. There's information here about the kinds of opportunities that we know exist to engage with these stakeholders. But again, with the direction from the commission at your October meeting to not spend any more money at this point in time with Hoffman York, they have not been able to do the kind of detailed planning that's necessary in order to adequately engage those stakeholders. We know that that outreach is going to include social media and email, earned PR, sharing information through a variety of different partner channels, possibly some paid media, et cetera. We need to be very deliberate in the messaging and the channels through which we do this campaign. And then, as I said, in your meeting materials are more information about the different kinds of campaigns that Hoffman York has conducted both for the state of Montana as well as for a state agency in the state of Wisconsin. Addie's available to answer questions or provide more details about those campaigns. Most importantly, I think for you, is an understanding that we don't just do this campaign and assume it will be successful. We need to understand whether or not we are being successful. We need to evaluate our success. And undoubtedly, we will need to continue to improve the campaign over time. One of the reasons why Hoffman York was selected to be the contractor was because of their approach they refer to as return on ideas. They too are very deliberate in how they measure their impact and the success of their services. Provided for you here are examples of how they are measuring the success of the Come Home Montana Campaign, which they've administered for the Governor's Office. As you are aware, we take very seriously our ability to understand and measure the impact of the services of the state library. And it's by evaluating the use of these services alongside targeted educational campaigns that we will be able to view and understand the impact that this campaign has on our ability to reach the kinds of audiences that we want to meet and to solve the problem that we have identified. There are many metrics that we will look to to understand whether or not and how we are being successful, where we may need to make changes over time to ensure that we continue to identify and meet the needs of these audiences. But they largely revolve around understanding the use of our services and how our target audiences are engaging with those services. And I am absolutely confident that with Hoffman York's approach to their measuring success, coupled with the state library's own measurements, we are going to be able to see a positive difference in improving Montanans' access to the information they need and resolving the problem that has been a problem for the state library for many, many years. Addie, is there anything you would want to add about your experiences on these campaigns?
Jenny, honestly, you covered it really, really well. So I don't feel, I don't feel the need to add anything at this time. But I am available for questions.
I hope that information provides the kind of historic context and background for what the rebranding campaign is and what it is intended to accomplish. As I said at the October commission meeting, I think it would be a huge mistake for us to stop the process at this point with just the release of a new brand. A brand alone cannot solve the problem we are intending to solve through the educational campaign. The other question the commissioners had was regarding the nature of the contract that we have with Hoffman York. And so you have in your meeting materials that contract and attorneys Don Harris and Michelle Snowberger are also here and available to answer questions. I did email commissioners earlier an opinion from Michelle that said that the contract allows for termination for cause either on the part of the state library or on the part of Hoffman York. However, at this point in time, we believe that Hoffman York has met all of the relevant deliverables of the contract to this point in time and do not believe that there is cause to terminate the contract. With that, I think I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question about the spending before we go on to this portion. And I thank you for the presentation to catch up, Tom, and is it Cindy?
Patricia?
Patricia?
Patricia.
Sorry about that. And Patricia, our new member. You said that you have at this point spent $210,000 of the $290,000. You also said that they were not able to move forward with the rollout until we approved that because at that point, it was the money spent on the logo. But according to all the materials, we had the money spent on the logo this last time we met was like $150,000, $160,000. And so what caused that $60,000 jump if indeed there was no spending on rollout? What do they?
Let me clarify. The total contract deliverables as proposed by Hoffman York is $210,000. This has not been fully spent. We have only spent through the brand development. So we have spent, we have spent to date. We've spent about $136,000 in cash and we accrued $10,000. So that was what was spent as of the end of the first quarter.
So when you're talking about the cost of the rollout, are you talking about $136 up to $210,000 or are you talking about $136 up to $292,000?
What has been proposed by Hoffman York? The deliverables according to the contract are $210,000 plus incidentals and travel. The authority from the commission was up to $292,500, but the amount in the contract is that $210,000.
Okay. Thank you for.
Yeah, and just to clarify, that additional $80,000 or $70,000, $80,000 there includes out-of-pocket costs that could include, for example, paid media. So it's not just all travel and incidentals. There are working, primarily that is working media dollars.
That hasn't been spent yet, but you're proposing.
Correct.
Right. You're proposing the full budget be $210,000, not $290,000?
$210,000 comprises our agency services. So the time that we've spent to do the research, the brand development to date, as well as our planning, our, any creative development to support the plan, time to execute that plan. And the remaining, whatever, $80,000, we were considering at the time out of pocket, I think, to support any purchases that needed to be made. Now, please keep in mind, when we initially put forth this proposal, it was during the close of the RFP process. We had not actually started working with the state library at all. So you know, it's really in that planning process that we finalize how those dollars are allocated. So I don't want to commit and say this is set in stone in terms of what we believe needs to be spent where. You know, knowing what we know now will make absolutely the smartest decision with how to allocate the remainder of the budget.
Thank you. And I know the purpose of today's meeting was to review what legally, what our legal opportunities here are in clarification. So I'm looking forward to hearing from both Elsie's attorney and the other two.
I have a question. What is the? I'm going to look through the document when it's a little more expanded on my screen or printed out to show how Hoffman York has in the past measured effectiveness. Do we have a baseline numerical measure of awareness for the different constituencies?
Tom, we do. And of course, the use metrics vary by the different kinds of services. But we measure, for example, the number of Talking Book Library patrons that we have. We measure our engagement with our consulting program to libraries around the state. We know the number of users of our Kedashal application and our other applications. We know the number of users we have for our growing real-time network and the next-generation 911 services. So we do have access to all of those kinds of metrics as a baseline to move forward.
I'd like to follow up. So digitally, it's easy to know how many people are using, maybe even how many unique users are using and how many uses per user are occurring. But that's really not the purpose of the brand project that we're engaged in. It's about awareness. So maybe users. We're striving to increase awareness of the services. And that's a slightly different measure than users themselves.
Maybe you can speak a little more to that. And let me give you a kind of a concrete example of something that we hope to achieve. Right now, we know that we serve between 2,000 and 3,000 patrons with our Talking Book Services. But we know that somewhere between 25,000, possibly up to 50,000 Montanans could be eligible for that service. We want to raise awareness with that target population of these services so that they are aware and can make use of those services. And that would then translate into new users of that program. I understand that there are likely other measures of awareness. People who might know about and support a program that might not necessarily use it themselves. Is that what you're?
Yes, that's my point. Thank you.
Yep, yep.
I have a question. I'd like to go back before we do the legal to the very beginning. I thank you for your presentation, Jenny. I felt like it really captured everything. This whole project started with the legislature making budget cuts. And with the legislature saying that, according to your own presentation, that reflecting that libraries were, oh, what did you call them? Not unnecessary, but?
Non-essential.
Non-essential. Okay.
I would never personally say that, but.
I don't. You did not. Which is non-essential, which given the fact that the legislature is dealing with truly essential services, you have to compare it to protection of the people and those kinds of things. So, but the whole function of this was to change the legislative opinion that libraries are non-essential. By, and as I read it, and I could be completely wrong. There are two ways to go here. Take the cuts they made and figure out how to encourage though the new budget, the new program with the cuts the legislative made and to do, reach as many people as possible or go the direction of using the resources you have to build more customers, to make it more essential, to get more programs, to, you know, to grow it so they would see it as more essential. So I'm looking at it from both ways. I'm looking at it from the legislature who, given their tremendous responsibilities and limited expenses, are saying this is non-essential. What can you do within your framework to fulfill the essential part? Now, is this progress we're taking going the other way and saying, oh, we're very essential. We'll show you by growing it and making more users. And that's, I'm not saying that's good or bad. I'm just trying to understand the reaction to what the legislature did. And Tom, you were in the legislature at the time, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So you might be able to give us some help here. But I think I want to go back to the original starting point, which was we have to change that legislative opinion we're non-essential and try to get back all those people and all those services that were cut. And maybe that isn't a desirable goal. I'm not saying it's not. Okay, so I need to understand that purpose going.
I think it's sort of a yes and, you know, we had to find a way to deal with a 31% budget cut. And because so much of our budget is tied up in personal services, it really translated to a loss of staff, which meant that
Right.
we didn't necessarily cut services, but we had to slow our development and investment in those services.
As did everyone in the state. Elsie, you had to cut your staff too.
Absolutely. Yeah, there were, there were cuts across state government. Absolutely.
Yeah.
With, with the opportunity from the interim study and then the bills that were passed in the 21 session, then we were able to restore some of the funding that was lost and also expand services, which those services meet our mission. We're, you know, we're managing data that is part and parcel to the mission of the state library and does benefit Montanans and is of value to the legislators that supported those programs and services. And, you know, I'm very grateful. I appreciate Tom bringing up the awareness from others who may not be users like the legislators. You know, our legislation that was passed in 2021, passed by a fairly wide margin of legislators. And we have tremendous support in our interim budget committee under Chair Beadie's leadership. In fact, one of the, one of his goals during this interim was to change the reporting structure that the budget committee sees of the state library's budget because he is aware that legislators are not as familiar with our services. And there was nothing in the reporting that kind of called out those services. And so he worked with his own staff and our staff to come up with better ways to raise awareness within the legislature of what those services are. So I think it's a yes and, you know, we strive to do what we can within the budget we have. But as Elsie always says, we have to understand how users are benefiting from these services. And, and right now, we know that people can benefit from our services. They just don't know about them or they're benefiting from them and don't essentially give credit to the state library for offering those services.
Okay. Thank you. Now, Tammy, yes, thank you, Tammy. Before we jump into that, just let me say, when the budget cuts occurred, yes, they hit everything across the state government. I was very fortunate that I did not riff anybody. I never cut anybody. There was not anyone in jeopardy for that. But we did a lot of other fiscal management in order to heal the budget. The other part, and Tom, yes, you were in the legislature with me. In fact, my seatmate, which is very nice to have you on the commission. But what I'm, what I also recognize is that government is an ebb and a flow. And to have a recognition of something that has taken one session to be supplanted the next session with dollars is a recognition. But the other thing is because of term limits, there may not be that recognition. So it is incumbent upon leadership in the agencies to recognize that ebb and flow and to really manage the people, given the budget as it is, because those legislators may not remember what they took to give back. And I think that's really an important aspect of this. Michelle, I would love to hear your legal component part of this. And I think Tammy, that's where you were going as well?
Yes, very much so. That's what I thought the meeting focused on. So I really would appreciate that.
Good morning. My name is Michelle Snowberger and I'm an attorney with the Department of.
Um good morning. Uh my name is Michelle Snover, and I'm an attorney with the Department of Administration, and I've worked. With the department um for just over a year. Uh to my left here is Don Harris. He's our chief legal for the Department of Administration. And I just want to say, um it was very nice to see you again, Superintendent. Um and Rick, um I uh came from the Department of Justice where I worked with. Agency Legal Services Bureau and provided um. Legal support to the uh Superintendent and Office of Public Instruction. Prior to that, I worked on the um business side of motor vehicles. I ran the driver license bureau for them for about six years. So. Um so thank you. I I'm happy to be here to talk a little bit about this contract. So this uh contract. Um has uh basically two provisions to allow a termination um as. Um. She needs stated that the primary way of terminating this contract is for a a material breach, either by Hoppin York or by the state. Um and I am unaware of any facts, which would lead to us to say that um. Either parties in breach at this time. It seems that both parties are um. Um in compliance with the contract um and that statement of work. The the second area that the contract does provide for um allowing um for termination. Would be for termination for lack of funding. So the there's a statute um that allows for that uh that is in eighteen four three thirteen. Um that is within the State Procurement Act um. And it allows for the legislature to remove funding for programs. Um and so the in. The way that they're they would do that, would there be a line item in uh House Bill two that would specifically say we're removing. Uh two hundred thousand dollars and it's not available for for this purpose. Um and the legislature does that on a regular basis. Um there is, uh but they did not do that in this case. So we we don't have any reduction of funding. Um it has to be a specific reduction of funding. It can't just be overall reduction of fundings. It has to be a specific uh statement by the legislature that they are removing funding for this purpose. Um there is a little bit of language there uh if funds are not appropriated or otherwise made available to support the continuation of the contract. And um we spent a little bit of time in discussing this aspect. Uh because it's it's kind of insufficient to just say we don't want to use this money for this purpose anymore. That we want to use it for something else. That's not really a reduction of funding. Um if the trust uh dissolved. If there was um for some reason, the money was not available in the in the trust and you said, well, we don't have this money. Uh you might be able to make an argument uh to a court to say that that trust um that monies were no longer available. But these monies are available and they have been apportioned for this purpose. Um it is it is my opinion, and I would say the Department of Administration's opinion, that if. The commission moved forward, that that would be a material breach uh in terminating this contract, that would be a material breach of this contract. And that um Hoffen York could seek damages. So that's a little bit about where we are. Um and I'm happy to answer any other specific questions that you might have.
I do have. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Tammy.
No, my two questions are very quick. So um. All throughout this process, Jenny has said, but this is with the trust money. This is with the trust money. That's different than state money. So I'm Mich- Michelle, does the all this law apply if it's a private trust money and not a state?
So see.
Mm hmm, mm hmm. Because we've been hearing that all along, and now all of a sudden, it's like, oh, no, it's a state money. So I just need clarification on does that trust?
Um so you're right. It is a different funding source, right? So the source of this money is from the trust fund. Um and if we said that the eighteen. Four three thirteen does not apply because it's not state money, uh then you would have less of an argument about termination. There would be a greater argument that you need to. That if you terminate it, um because you no longer wanted to move forward with it, but that would be a material breach. In in my opinion, you don't even have a, there is not much of an argument, even under eighteen four three thirteen. Um because that money from the trust fund is still available and the legislature has not re made that reduction. So.
I don't understand what does the legislature and Tom and Elsie know this too, I guess. You how how can the legislature appoint in each in House Bill two what the trust? That they could or couldn't use the trust when we were told the trust was outside the legislature. Um so I'm not, I'm I feel like we're mixing apples and oranges here.
So let's step back. So Commissioner, let me just try to make sure I clarify. Let's say, let's say this was general funds money. All right.
Then.
Let's just say that hypothetically, this is general fund money. The legislature could in House Bill two say. You cannot use this money now to pay for this contract. And if we weren't in the initial fiscal year of that contract. The contract would be terminated. So there is that still you have to be in fiscal in the second year of the contract. In order for even this the legislature to be able to reduce that funding. In this case, if we had been using uh. General funds to do this, we're in the second year.
But we're not.
We we're we're.
Irrelevant.
Well, well, hold on a minute. Just let's just say general, let's just make this out. That you could say, okay, the legislature in the twenty twenty three year could say, we're not giving you that money anymore. And we're terminating the contract.
Right.
And then we would have, we would be justified to terminate the contract. The parties would walk away. They would get paid for whatever work they've already accomplished, and no more further work would be done. The tricky part is that this is not a general appropriations, not general fund, this is trust. So really, I don't see any way that the legislature.
No.
Could make a reduction in funding for this. So the only other portion of that statute that may apply. It would be to say. If the funds are not appropriated or otherwise made available to support. There's that's a two, that's a little bit of a clause there, not appropriated or not available to support. So in this case, we have a live, we have the tr- trust fund. Uh and that money is available, right? So. The money is in the trust. It's available for use. It's available for use for this purpose. I don't see a defense. If the if the State Library said, we wish to terminate that contract. We're going to terminate for for because we don't want to do this anymore. We could be facing uh liability on that issue. So I don't see a clear way of terminating without facing liability.
Could we have Rick's opinion? Rick, you see uh everything I hear Michelle saying. Applies to general funding. So none of it really is designed for what legally the trust is bound. Rick, do you have any input on that? And then I noticed the head of the trust came on. I I feel like what we're doing is taking general fund law and trying to. Fix it in here to the trust. So can I maybe? Elsie, Rick.
Could I, could I, I'm sorry, could I just make one further comment? If the if that eighteen four uh three thirteen does not apply, general contract law applies. And general contract law applies that says when you sign a contract, you're required to complete the contract. Unless there's an another reason to get out. And the reason to get out would be a material breach. There's no material breach.
Okay, thank you.
Parties have not. So it if you take out the reduction of funding and we say the reduction of funding cannot apply to to this case because it was trust funds. There's no other.
Okay.
Contractual way of getting out to that, if that assists you.
That helps a lot.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm gonna interrupt here. Um Jenny, you and I. I asked a question to you one time about the trust. Could you explain that there are two different trusts? And explain how those work, please.
Sure. So the State Library Trust, the one we're talking about in this instance, has existed. I don't have the year. It's probably about thirty years now. Um it was created through legislation uh as I shared. And the. Um legislation gives the State Library Commission the authority to. As it says here, accept, receive and administer any gifts, donations, bequests and other legacies made available to the State Library. So this trust falls within the authority of the State Library Commission. The trust for Montana Libraries is a nonprofit five oh one C three. Uh that was formed in partnership with the State Library back in twenty nineteen. Um and it raises funds and accepts donations to support statewide library programs. Um the Chair of the Commission and the State Library and have an ex officio seat on the board. Of that trust, but that trust is a a separate five oh one C three. There are operating agreements between the the trust and the State Library that are reviewed every couple of years. To make sure that uh we are operating as good partners, but it is it's a partner entity. That the State Library Commission does not have direct authority over in the way that they have direct authority over these monies. The monies in the State Library Trust, as it says, are for. Um the benefit of the State Library over and above our operating, normal operating services. Does that help, Penny?
Yes, and the funds we are using are from this state library. So technically, it is state money, correct?
They're they are private funds held by the state.
Good. Any other questions or comments?
I think Elsie and Rick are going to speak a couple of times.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Michelle, good to see you again, even in a two dimensional world as we are. So my my questions have to deal with the timing of the contract. So um it is for a two year with an opportunity for uh an extension. Has that has the timing been uh completed?
Um. Not to my knowledge. I don't remember the the contract end date. If it's, I believe it's through June twenty twenty two, June thirty twenty twenty three. Um we are obviously significantly behind in the the planned rollout. Um we had hoped to begin that process this past summer.
Mm hmm. So uh Michelle, then, when it comes to the availability, if the contract, this contract ends. Uh June uh it's in six months. Is that an understanding that it ends in six months, this contract that we're working through right now?
Well, certainly the termination date is June thirtieth of twenty twenty three. Um. When I I guess I should have backtrack a little bit on my statements. Um the statement that the um. Commission has asked for no further work to be done, eventually might turn out to be a breach, right? Because if they're not able to do the work. Um then they're not able to be paid for that work. So there might either need to be a conversation with Hoppen York as to the. Um timeline, as to whether or not they can complete all the work within that six month period. Or if the commission would be willing then to extend that um. Past that June thirtieth date, which they could do under the current contract um. Because they could extend that date.
Thank you. So Jenny, has any extension talk been happening? Addie, have we had any discussion that because of the pausing and. We paused for what? How many months have we paused? Ninety days, three months?
Um well, no, to answer your question, no, we have not talked about an extension at this point. Um we. Hmm. No work on the educational campaign uh has carried forward since. Um the June Commission meeting. Um although the commission directly directed us to not expend any further funds at your October meeting.
So is it the date of June or the date of October then, Michelle, that we have paused?
Uh I I I I would have to look back exactly about what is happening, but it seems that there was action taken by the State Library in June. Not to take any further action and which was then, you know, ratified by the commission. Um and maybe at their direction. I I I don't have those minutes in front of me, but it would seem to me that. Most likely, we would be looking at that June date because after that. Uh Hoppin York did not take any further action uh into the sec- into the next phase of the contract.
I I would I would just clarify that um. Because of the request by the commission to revisit the logo. The focus of the work from June to October was the brand development. Phase of the contract. So that phase took longer than we anticipated. Um and it's um that brand needed to be developed and identified and approved before we could. Proceed with the rollout campaign, the awareness campaign, which again is at that at the point in time we are right now. And it was at your October meeting that um. You requested that we pause any further spending on the contract.
Um I'd like to. I have in front of me here to clarify two dates. December ninth, twenty twenty. Which is almost, which is almost two years, is when the State Library Commission, according to your record. Funded the branding contract of two hundred ninety two thousand, which is sort of a strange subject or, you know, amount to pull out of the air. But that was not legally when it started, but it's been going since two thousand seventeen when they cut the budget. But that was when you set to begin looking for it, and the commission actually. Um approved under Commissioner um Kennings to begin the rebranding. So that as a commissioner. This started December ninth, twenty twenty with a vote. Um in June, I I would like to point out that I went back and visited the minutes. And what we did in June was defeat the logo four to three. And we asked that it not come back. The committee, the staff wanted to come back with a different. Different logo, and we said we wanted two things, one, different logos, and that's been taken care of, so no need to rediscuss that. And secondly, we wanted the legal opinion about severing the contract. That's why we hesitated in June. And and so first of all, I want to thank Michelle. Thank you for your good presentation. I just didn't think you knew that we've been told for the entire time that this is trust money and not. Not appropriate to the state funding. We've been told that all along, and I didn't know if you knew that. But I appreciate what you said about if not the state, then the other. Um. So I think it's important to remember that if you go back and visit the minutes, we asked for this legal opinion. It's what, December? We've actually had the presentation of a logo given to us. We voted on the logo. And the purpose of the pause was the legal information we're getting today. So we kind of got the horse before the cart there. But or cart before the horse, but nonetheless, the timing, you folks started to prove this December ninth. So that leads to my other question. How much is this commission bound by decisions made December ninth, twenty twenty? And I I ask that from the future, because we have a whole new board and a whole new commission. And are we, how, I mean. I thought probably the lawyers and Rick and even Tom as a legislator. Are we bound by? They hadn't spent this money. And are we, you know, would you give me help with that? So we know that in the future.
So Commissioner, I can speak as to the issue of the contract. The state is bound by contracts that they entered into. So you're bound by the contract that a previous commission. Entered into. Um that contract is a valid contract. There's. This was nothing to look at to say that we could void the contract. We don't have, we don't have any factors that we can avoid this contract. So just under general contract law, under the State Procurement Act. Uh and we are not able to just say, oh, we have decided we don't want to do this anymore. We have to have a reason. That's to be legally justified reason, which I do not see that you have in this situation. Now, other items, um I'm I'm not gonna, I was not asked to um. Give an opinion as to what what um can be, but certainly commissions can change direction. can change direction, can, can take other action that a previous Commission did, as long as it's not, they're not legally bound by that act. So.
That's good to know in the future, for me.
So there are cases sometimes where an agency will decide that they want to proceed in a different direction than what they did when they originally entered into a contract. When that occurs, usually what happens is the agency ends up paying the full contract amount, and then the agency moves on and does whatever else it wants to do. Sometimes you can enter into negotiations or discussions with the contractor and reach an understanding that's different from the original understanding, and that's something that you all might discuss. But as Michelle said, the contract creates a legal obligation. You can't really do anything about that legally unless there is a breach or something that would allow you to do that. But in terms of the direction of the program, certainly that's within the purview of the Commission. And if you wanna take a different direction, know not move forward with the rebranding effort, that I think is something that is within the discretion of the Commission.
Well, thank you for that information. I personally am very grateful for that. I wish we had gotten this information that you have given us that's so helpful. Because I think, for me, it looks like there was never anything we could do. And so it feels as if we could have saved ourselves about four months of work if we'd have known clear back when we asked for this opinion in June that we really had no options. So I thank you. I think we can move forward and in the future, make sure we spend the library's money in a ethically responsible way.
I've got a question. So is it possible for the Commission, under the terms of this contract, where it says made, made available? Is there a difference between available, which, Michelle, you described, the money is, is available? But does the Commission have the discretion to make it available or not make it available along through the course of the contract time period by failing to approve further expenditures?
So the, the statute was really drafted in, with regards to funding that the state legislature was appropriating. I mean, that was the purpose of that statute. There is not case law here really developing this, these statements. So it's, it's my opinion, and I would say the Department's opinion, that the fact that these funds are sitting in the Library Trust would not be grounds for you to say, we're not gonna spend it, for you to be able to terminate this without any liability. Like, I, I don't see that going well for the state in court.
Okay.
I don't see that argument being fruitful in court.
And Commissioner Bernadette, if I may add, if you, if you think about this as, let's say, a business partnership, where Michelle and I are partners in a business and we agreed to a contract and we're going to build a commercial building with three office spaces, and at some point Michelle and I get into a disagreement and Michelle says, well, we really only should get two office spaces, there's only two of us. So we don't want to continue the agreement anymore. That doesn't mean that the funds are not available. It just means that we've had a change of heart and it doesn't change our contract obligations to the vendor that was providing that service to us.
Okay, thanks.
So I guess what I would ask as a result of today, and this was very helpful, I still would like to hear kind of an overview from Elsie and Rick is how they felt about it. Thank you for your questions, Elsie. I, I guess what I would like to make sure at the meeting when we actually take action, it seems that Elsie touched on something very important, that the timing of this must be completed, as I read, by June 30th, 2023, and the money cannot be spent more than what was approved on the contract and that Hoffmann York has between now and that point in time to spend the money is the staff and you guys decide. And then at that point in time, you did mention that you, you mentioned something on the notes today, Jenny, that there could be discussion of future. This is just the beginning. We might have future need. That is not at this point on the table. There's, nothing's on the table, but this amount of money spent by June 30th, 2023. So I guess I'd like that clarified at the meeting when we, I don't know that, you know, it just seems like that's all we need clarified. And then how it's spent on the rollout is decided by Melissa and Evan, I think. So. And you, of course.
So, thank you very much again, and I appreciate the, the timing aspect, Tamia, bringing that back. So coming back to that, if there was a pause, was the dollar spent then on the recoloration of the array? So the dollar was spent, in my understanding. There was not a pause in the movement of the dollar moving forward? I'm looking at to see what the obligation of the budget was. Have we spent the budget up to the timing in, in the purportment of the contract?
Superintendent, I just maybe make sure I understand. Are you saying, did we have to expend additional money to do that rebranding? Was additional monies expended to do that rebranding?
Michelle, I think that's a perfect question. I, I, that's not where I was going, but I think that is part of it, for sure. But my question had to deal with, have we, have we expended up to, I'm on page two of the contract, where it has brand development, part two. Have we now completed that?
Through part three.
So have we completed the contract to date as it reads in, in the manner of it? Or because of the pausing, have we, and to asking your question then, has more money has been spent during the pause?
No, the answer to that is no. I don't know if you heard Melissa.
No to which one, Melissa?
The answer to that is no. So the, the pause was, I believe, I have to go back and check my notes, but I believe in October was when there was actual action taken to stop spending, and there have been no invoices paid beyond the work that was accomplished through that point in time. We have paid through number three on the screen right here, brand development, part two. We have paid through those amounts which match the deliverables that have been sent to us by Hoffmann York.
Thank you for that clarification. So coming back again, then, we paused it for sixty days. If that's the case, then, then will we be able to be on track with four and five through the June of 23?
I can speak to that if it's helpful.
Yeah, I think that's a question for Addie.
Yeah, I mean, we would certainly go about it in more accelerated fashion, but I do believe that we could, you know, have an effective campaign out by the end of June and expend, fulfill the rest of the contract.
Thank you, Addie. So Jenny, how many, how many Commission meetings would there be from now until June?
At, at least three. There's the December, February, well, I'm sorry, four, December, February, April, and June meetings.
Okay, so I know there was conversation on who is going to be the controlling entities regarding the campaign planning, the creating part, the media buy, because somebody has to approve of that. I'm assuming somebody would have to approve of that. What I'm hearing and, and understanding is that, because we do have new membership, that we have a lot of information that flows to the Commission, having possibly some Commission members either be heart of that approval process, or it be coming back to the Commission, just because we have X amount of meetings, and I know it is a lot less expensive in this two-dimensional world rather than gathering us all together. But I believe transparent communication in how we move forward is going to bona fide everything that Hoffman and York does for the library as well as understanding the dollar flow. And that would be my request, is that there is more information and that it's not just, this is what we did, this is what we're going to do in the future. And possibly, if it does come back with an approval, or however many meetings you might need for that, so that we can have a Commission that functions moving forward and doesn't have these bumps. But I agree that new Commissions may want to tend to deviate elsewhere. And I guess that's my last question, then. When it comes to the amount of dollar that's in the trust, it's my understanding that that trust dollar is still a state dollar, correct?
It, it is a private dollar. It is a non-budgeted private dollar. So it's in what we call an O8 fund. And those dollars are direct, we can be directed on how to spend those by the Commission only.
And coming back again, could the Legislature in the next ninety days do anything, that's why the timing to me is so important, do anything to demand the Commission on how to spend those dollars?
In my opinion, Superintendent, no.
Okay.
They have no authority over the expenditures of the trust fund.
Thank you.
And I had, Elsie, I had pointed clarification. I, I'm very confused. Melissa just said this is O8 fund controlled by the Commission. That is not what we've been hearing.
Can you explain more what you mean by that? Because I don't, I don't understand.
I didn't understand your comment. You said this is O8 fund money controlled by the Commission.
That is correct.
We've been hearing it, we have no control over this. This is a legal contract set by the state.
Well, that's, that's actually inaccurate. Every, every dollar we've ever spent out of the trust has been taken in a public meeting to the Commission for approval or disapproval. Every dollar that's ever been spent has been approved by this body. So where, where the, where the difference lies is we were just talking about the trust itself, the broad umbrella of the dollars in the trust. Those are private dollars approved by the Commission for expenditure. The Commission approved expending up to $292,000 for a contract. That contract has been executed, so we are legally bound by that contract. And the Commission does not have the authority to undo that contract, according to the attorneys, lest we be in breach of contract.
Elsie, do I hear you saying that you would like this rollout to come back for information as the process is going on to the Commission? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, I am. And then the other aspect of that, Michelle, if state statute changed that Commissions would be under the legal authority of the Legislature for any, any dollar, that would then impact this contract or any future contract made?
So, I, I don't know what the Legislature may intend. So, and you may have better information with regards to that than I currently do. But one of the things that the state cannot do is pass a bill that interferes with contracts. So if a contract's in place, the state Legislature can't come in now and go, oh, well, we're changing the law and therefore that contract is now void. They, they can't, it's in a pair of, an obligation, private obligation, thank you. My boss talking my ear here. So that's, that's forbidden. I mean, that's not, that's not an option that's allowed. So even if the Legislature came in and said, oh, we're bringing every Commission over here, and specifically, we're giving the Commission, this Commission, the authority to cancel contracts based on that we, that you don't want to do the funding anymore, that would not apply to this contract.
Perfect. I understand. You can't claw back then, but moving forward, that might be an opportunity or an obligation. The other thing that I know, because of being an elected, not wanting to have contracts exist past me and inhibit the next Superintendent or the next, in this frame, the next Commission. We may want to really understand, and I know Commissions may ebb and flow for multiple reasons, whether it's a term limit within a Commission, or it's just someone, you know, who removes themselves from the Commission. So I understand that there is that tenuous part of it. Moving forward then, contracts. So this contract was developed two years ago, and we have it ending then in six months and an opportunity for a seven-year renewal within any amount of services or dollars for services rendered. Is that correct then, Michelle?
So the contract termination is June 30th. There could be a view of Hoffmann York that they're not, I don't, I have Hoffmann York saying that they believe they could complete this by June 30th, so we're gonna say yes. It could be that this pause might have been a situation where they could not complete all the work necessary, and therefore the work that wasn't completed, you may still be required to expend that money, either through a renewal so they can complete the work, right, or an extension so they can complete the work, or just a termination and go, well, whatever work is done, was done, but you'd still be obligated to pay that money, just as if you terminated it today. Because of this issue where they were not able to continue work based on actions the state took. And when I say the state, I, I'm referring to the Montana State Library is the state as well, right? Because you're a state entity. The Commission's a state entity, the library is a state entity, the Department of Administration is a state entity.
Michelle, I'd like to go back and, and I don't want, I get uncomfortable when people start picking up phrases and then throwing them out like they're fat. And this six-month pause is not really a fact. It might be an opinion, but that's different. What happened in June again was that we defeated the, the logo four to three, and we agreed to reconsider future logos, we have a subcommittee, and to get the legal opinion we're getting today before we did anything, which of course, again, the cart came before the horse. And their subcommittee had an agreement with Hoffmann York, which they reported back to us, and everybody agreed to. That Hoffmann York would bring, and we have it in writing, three new proposals without any additional expense. So nothing was paused. They just agreed that they wouldn't charge more for their work at that point, but they were. And meanwhile, Jenny was gathering the legal opinion for us to have before we took action. So there was, it was not really a pause in the work. It was just, maybe I'd even say a redirection that we had defeated this, but we asked for it to continue under those.
I, 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 I will
Which were agreed to.
Rely on what you're saying, but there definitely was a pause in October, because you said money. So that still may not allow them to complete the work, right? I don't know what discussions occurred outside of the Commission, so I'm not, I'm not gonna say that. I'm just saying that there was some delay, that that delay at least from October until today until your next meeting, right, which, because you're, I, I don't actually know where you're, because you can't take any action today, this is the working meeting, until the next, next week. That delay is firmly on the state. Now, whether or not there was other delay prior to that, I'm just saying that could be attributed to the state would be something for us to evaluate with more facts. Because I don't know all the facts. So I'm, I, I, I do, I do understand what you're saying, that you don't believe that there was a, a pause, that there, there was that, I, I I really can't do that.
People were making reference to pauses in June. That is not correct. The only pause was October. That's what I was clarifying.
Okay.
So for just another clarification, Michelle and team, thank you. You're not inexpensive, because I know I have used your services before, so this is also a cost. Jenny, who did work with us in, and the Commission in developing this contract at the state level?
Superintendent, it was Mike Mannion who signed the contract. Uh, Superintendent, it was Mike Mannion who signed the contract on behalf of DOA.
But putting the terms into the contract, who brought that together?
Um, we worked with the State Procurement Bureau.
Right, but the idea, I, I agreed, we as well do that within our agency, but also understanding uh, the terms of the completion, the timing and everything. Um, I know it's challenging because the library is small enough to not have a lawyer and incur those costs, but using um, agency legal services is always that opportunity. So um, what I would say to the commissioners that are here, because sometimes there are legal entities that we deal with, it's good to have a consistent one. And if Michelle can continue being that consistent entity for us as a commission moving forward, that would be very beneficial uh, to the commission as well as to any other contractor challenges that the state library might have moving forward.
Michelle's been fantastic helping us with contracts.
Agreed, agreed, agreed. Agreed. So if I could just say one other thing, I think it's information, Jenny. With the commission in my mind and just watching this thing roll out, that um, it would be great to have an unveiling, but let's have an unveiling altogether, rather than having it being um, uh, not secretive by any manner, because we are very public and transparent, but wanting to make sure that there are new entities at the table and recognizing that, that uh, people want to roll up their sleeves and, and work on this. I think the rollout is going to be very important uh, to understand who exactly we're targeting with and making sure that that dollar effect isn't going to be the end of it all. Then the dollars are spent on this, it's still up to the library and the library commission to further the work. And it's not just going to be the expenditure of these, it's going to be what is the next step? And that's where the leadership of the library comes in, Jenny, under yourself and your team. So thank you for uh, allowing this working meeting to happen. I think it was very beneficial for myself as well as educational for the rest of the new commission members.
I see that Addie has her hand raised.
I just, I, I wanted to just address um, the issue of the timing and the pause. Uh, if I may, you know, while technically uh, what, what occurred in June was not on the record as a pause. I just wanted to note that Hoffman York would have at that point, with the acceptance of the logo, moved forward with our rollout planning. So there, there is a period of time over that last, you know, five months where we would have been doing the work that we are now being asked to do now here in accelerated fashion between, uh, you know, hopefully December and the end of June of 2023.
So I want to talk about next steps. Um, and, and I hope we are all very clear about next steps moving forward. At your October meeting, we were asked to have a motion on your agenda at the December meeting to pause the contract with Hoffman York. Um, based on the work session and, and information shared here today, do you still wish to have that agenda item as an action item next week?
Well, we can't decide that, that would be action.
Well, so I suppose you're right, so I suppose we could, we could bring it. I want to also be very clear that um, you do not need to take action to continue to approve these funds. So my understanding then is that we at your direction will have a motion on the agenda next week to pause the contract.
And if that's defeated, that's defeated. And that, it seems legally, that's the overwhelming option. Legally, that's pretty much what's gonna happen, but I can't say that, but we can't make a decision today. So I, I would leave it there and then let it die.
And thank you, thank you, Tammy, that helps. Moving forward, I think it would be challenging for us to bring aspects of the rollout campaign to the full commission for approval. But we've talked about having a commissioner or two commissioners on the team that is approving the components of the rollout campaign. And I know Peggy has volunteered to be a commission liaison to that work. Um, if there's another commissioner who's interested, we welcome that involvement. And then any kind of additional information we can provide going forward. Um, we're more than happy to share what that looks like. Um, Elsie, you had suggested some kind of roll, rollout, you know, if you have ideas of what that looks like, I, I'd love to hear your suggestions. Some kind of reveal, I think you said.
Yes, thank you. I, I apologize. Thank you. I believe that um, it is about an information flow and I think it's demanded now even more so, uh, because we have Patricia and Tom uh, on the board and the board is relatively new. And I think the incremental approach uh, and being, like I said, roll up the sleeves and being part of this, whether it is a vote that comes back, whether it's a question, should we go to the commission for this or not, the money is here. Basically, it's my understanding that the contract, and Michelle, help me with this, the contract is about the dollar. The contract is about completing the work, but what the work is, is up to what the commission can detail.
So um, Superintendent, certainly the, the way that a contract is implemented um, is generally not uh, explained within like the actual compliance of the contract. Those are terms about payment and um, warranties. But what is attached to this contract is the statement of work which has been approved. And that statement of work shows how the work is going to be implemented and in the manner in which it will be implemented. And in that statement of work, I don't know that there was a, a view that that would be brought back at every point for the commissioner to vote like yes or no to all of the different um, deliverables and timetables. I think the idea of having a commissioner, commission liaison and keeping the commission updated as to what is happening with the contract is very um, well um, defined and, and important. But I would say that the, the commission is also bound by that statement of work.
So to reiterate, that statement of work is a legal, is a legal document, Michelle?
Yes, it is. It's part of, it is actually part of the contract.
So there's no way to amend that statement of work?
There is a way to amend the statement of work and that would require negotiations with Hoffman York as to what that would look like. Um, that may then also, if there was no work being done while that negotiation was happening, might cause some difficulties with, with this, with us being able to meet our obligation under the contract.
Excellent, and I believe.
You certainly could look at a change order, right, and their change order may require additional funds, it may require time, might, might require additional time, so.
Robin has her hand up, let's talk to her. Okay.
Okay, I'm, I, I would gladly serve on the committee to, 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 on the, on the continuation of the rollout. Um, I, I kind of think that we're getting a little too in, in depth, but, but I believe that I would, I would really like to be part of it to, to try to smooth everything out and do whatever I possibly can to, to make this a, a better situation for all, for every, everyone involved and for the state library. We've got to get the information out.
Thank you, Robin. Are there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'd like to point out again, back to what we did in the last meeting. A motion was made by Elsie and seconded by me, and it did pass that um, that we pause the, the rollout, but the second part of that was that we get a presentation on the rollout of what that was gonna look like at this meeting. And so that's what I was expecting in December, is that, you know, whether that motion to stop or not, we can just take that, I think legally, I don't know, but maybe Elsie could just rescind it. Um, but we will be at this meeting receiving information on what that rollout will look like. Um, and according to the contract, the liaison with the commission is Melissa Briggs, that's number 211. She is the liaison with us, so we do have a liaison and she would be the one that would be, right, that's part of the contract. So um, I guess at this point in time, I think the meeting has been incredibly, incredibly helpful. I am looking forward to getting information about the rollout, it looks like. Um, with only seven members on a commission, I get really uncomfortable setting up subcommittees, there are so few of us that it feels like the work can be done, but um, I agree with you know, Peggy's on, would be willing to serve, Robin would be willing to serve, I would be willing to serve, that gives us three, it's not a forum.
Just, I just want to set expectations for December. Again, Hoffman York cannot be put into a position to provide information about the rollout um, because we've been directed for them not to spend.
Right, but Melissa can't.
Well, you know, I, I think the kinds of details you're looking for, please correct me if I'm wrong, are the audience and the, and the messages to those audiences and the means by which we're going to convey that messaging, et cetera, and that work has not been done, we are not in a position to share that information with you at this time.
Okay.
We'll be, we will be in the future, um, but given that Hoffman York has not put time into the contract, we're not prepared to provide that information.
So you do have your basics that you included in this packet, so there is some information available of what you would be doing, so we can throw that again at, in the December meeting, correct?
Right, exactly. I just don't want there to be any um, expectations that there's going to be some, some kind of more detailed presentation, because that does not exist at this time.
Great, and maybe we can move forth with uh, those of us who have volunteered to work on the um, rollout and we'll figure out our plan of, of action in December. Are there any other questions or comments?
Just thank you.
Productive meeting.
How about any other public comment, should we have? Do we need to read the chats?
I'm happy to read them, if, uh, there was a couple from Bruce. Um, Bruce Newell said, um, at nine fifty-one, Bruce from the trust for Montana, Montana libraries, the trust for Montana libraries is private 501(c)(3), the state's library trust, which is the money being spoken of here is under the supervision of the state, it is state money, not private. And then he added, under Montana statute, there is just one, one MSL commission, members come and go, but there is just one commission. And that is the end of the chat.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, then I guess.
Peggy, I just have a, a couple of quick announcements for the commission. Um, we have a busy week next week with two new commissioners and then our commission meeting on Wednesday will be at the Capitol. And then Wednesday at five, we're hoping that you'll be a part of a welcome reception at our new state library um, to welcome invited guests to that space to see what the new office space looks like. Uh, that is in Wednesday evening, if that sounds a, appropriate to you. And then on Thursday, we have our follow-up session with Dan Clark uh, and that will be at the new state library at nine thirty.
What are you planning for that to go?
Um, did you say how long are, are we planning for that to go? Uh, I think we're planning for a, a day-long session, probably about six hours.
All right. I'm sorry, Jenny, starting at what time again, could you let us know that?
Yeah, so the, the commission meeting itself will start at nine and then the reception, um, we're planning for five that evening and then the next day starting at nine thirty.
Okay, but, okay, um, and will Genevieve provide the address so I can put in my GPS so I don't get lost?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
All right, do any other announcements or comments? I guess we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.